Not gonna let no men disrespect women. Mr. Watson, I'ma hire you. I need a bodyguard for these guys disrespecting us in the council.
Thank you. Thank you Rafael. Good evening Patterson. Welcome to our special meeting. Good evening everyone on behalf of the Patterson Municipal Council. We welcome you to the special meeting today, June 16th. It's eight fifty-three P M. The meeting is now called to order. Madam Clerk, call the roll please.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call for Municipal Council's special meeting of Thursday, June 6th, 2024. The time is now eight fifty-four P M. Councilman Abdelaziz. Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Mims.
I am here and ready to serve, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Udin.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Velez.
President serving.
Thank you, Councilman, and Mr. President.
President, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, please read the forty-eight hour notice, please.
Yes, sir. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting was transmitted to the North Jersey Herald News, The Record, The Arabic Voice, The Italian Voice, La Presay Counterpuls, Dominican News, La Quesca Internacional, El Especial, The Patterson Press, The City Post News, Tap into Patterson, The Weekly Bangla Patrika, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. At or about eleven A M. on May thirty-first, 2024, such notices were posted on the bulletin board in the offices of the city clerk at City Hall. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that the Municipal Council of the City of Patterson has scheduled a special meeting for Thursday, June 6th, 2024. Should have been at eight P M. To be held in the council chambers, one fifty-five Market Street, third floor, City Hall, Patterson, New Jersey, for the purpose of discussing the following matter. It's one, a resolution honoring Principal Jorge V. Osorio for his years of service as an educator and principal instructor at John F. Kennedy High School. It's sponsored by Councilman M. D. Ford Udin and co-sponsored by all remaining members of the Municipal Council. It's a City Council Resolution twenty-four colon three five two. Formal action will be taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we will move to into the public portion. If we have any members of the community on the public portion to speak on this matter. And do we have any speaker, Madam Clerk, on public portion?
There are no speakers.
Say no, move to close.
Second. There's one in the audience.
Well, we have, we have Mr. G. Greer. That raised his hand. Brother Greer, good evening.
He will stand up. Good, good evening. So I, I just want to understand. So this public portion is only pertaining to this item? So I missed the public portion, okay?
No, no. You can speak on anything. This is a, this is a special meeting, so a public portion is open to anything. It's not just on the item council.
But you could speak about any subject, uh, Brother G.
See, they changed the rules where they feel like it, you know what I mean?
No, no.
People that came in here with a lot of people.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Councilmember, we are in public portion.
This is my three minutes. Can I have it, please?
Go ahead. I'm not stopping you. Go ahead.
Listen, I, I came down here to speak about recreation. I saw a very disturbing article in the newspaper today where, what was it, nineteen million dollars? Nineteen million dollars that this administration and this council body just let the money go. I, I read what the mayor said. He's gonna earmark some of this money for some other thing. But why waste our time coming to all of these meetings that they had over there to discuss recreation? And then you missed the deadline. This council should be enraged. Nineteen million dollars for the children of Patterson that's not there no more. That money was earmarked for a recreational center, something that this city desperately need. And we wonder why our children are out in the street with nothing to do. Nineteen million dollars, and I have not heard one council member say anything about it. One. Now, I don't know if y'all played us, well, this administration played us coming to those meetings, giving our input, and you missed the deadline for nineteen million dollars? And now you want to put a recreation center in the back of the police station? Now, Councilwoman, I understand they did say that before, but this is my time, and I just want to vent.
Thank you.
We don't want a recreation center in back of the police station.
And with the O I C. there either.
It, it's not feasible. It's, to me, to me, it makes no sense. Now, if somebody want to send me a private email explaining the whole... It sounds like what you're trying to do is take that money and fix up the police station. That's what it sounds like you're trying to do. And you're trying to incorporate a piece of recreation inside of that. So I'm asking this council to fight back on that. And for all of yous that's running for council at large, the other six of y'all just got in. But for those that's running for council at large, by supporting this, you would never get reelected in the City of Patterson. Because you, because the administration fumbled nine... Listen, nineteen million dollars. That's a lot of money. I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I mean, I'll take some feedback. Well, well, I already know Al is in support of that, that, that stuff on one eleven Broadway. Oh, he's not?
Councilmembers.
Okay, but listen. I need you guys to fight back against that. I see he want to send money to this place, that place. And then I saw two million dollars going to Vera Ames Park. Why do we need money for Vera Ames Park when that money was already set aside? Stop playing the games, y'all. That money for Vera Ames Park should be in the kitty already. So now you want to take another two million and get a Vera Ames Park? Come on, y'all. You went and get some money somewhere. You know, Barbara's Park can use some more money. You know, but anyway, I want you guys to look into that, because you all say you love the children of, of the City of Patterson. Let's show and prove that we love the children. And let's get that nineteen million dollars to the recreation center. And one other thing before I leave. I came before this body about a year ago and mentioned that Mike Williams laid out a, a plan for the Vera Ames Legacy Center. And what Mike is saying, you, you can reach out to him personally. Because there are folks that had that plan. Okay, I'm not here to say who had it and who didn't have it. But I, but I came before this body and told you guys that it was there. It was your job to say, well, Mike, text me that information, let me see it. Nobody said nothing. And like Mike said, Vera name does not have to go on it. Let's just get a recreation center for these children. Thank you, thank you, Council President, for allowing me the extra time.
Thank you, Brother G. Motion to close the public portion?
Say no to close, move.
Move by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilman Abdelaziz and Councilman Uden.
Council President?
Yes.
Mister John De La Santos. Ask if he could speak at the public portion.
Then, no, it was a motion. It was a motion moving second. So you, you want to remove the motion, councilmembers? Because...
Remove.
Ah?
Remove.
So we remove the motion to close, De La Santos, good evening.
Good evening, Council President.
Yes.
I just want to come back and reiterate what happened during the private session of the workshop. So to all those people that are watching now.
Can we start the clock?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So it's, I, I'm just amazed by the capacity of my council. To blatantly sit up there and misrepresent what's going on in the cannabis industry in the city is, is wrong. To tell me that there's three licenses that are currently issued out when as a grant recipient from the E D A, I know my regulations. I know my state regulation, and I know the city ordinance. Those three licenses were not three hundred feet away, were not properly zoned. And to tell me, while I sit there, that I'm wasting my time, Councilman Udin, to come here and advocate for myself, which is what, what this public forum is meant for, is outrageous. I mean, I, I've taken steps to even speak to legislators about certain bills, like Bill thirty-two thirty-five, which is referencing cancelling out, oh, hemp-derived products. So that'll take care of our current issues with the smoke shops, with the gas stations and the bodegas selling illicit products that they think are legal. And what the council's been complaining about. But to sit here and then hear this, that, you know, after a thirty thousand dollar check is handed to you, a year of time has passed, and no resolution? You guys are holding three applicants with a resolution that is not valid, which the state regulation clearly states that they will not be approved if they not, if they do not follow their state, their city ordinance. But, you know, you have three, three licenses, right, Mr. Udin, Mr. Velez, Mr. Kalik? No, there's three. Until, until there's two, no, no, there's three. Until there are two readings of that ordinance and it's changed, you have three licenses. You failed twice to get that done back in July and back in September. I was here throughout the whole thing. Now you're, you're telling me that I have to wait longer to get it back on the agenda, Council President? Countless times we've spoken, and you've told me those same things. I mean, a best, I guess a FOIA will get everything out, when how many times I've referenced this, and how many times we've gone back and forth, and all the different information that is pertinent to this. It is, thi- this is not illegal. This has been, we have been given the right by the state, by the law, to have these licenses. I am already licensed by the state. I just need permission from my city to operate. I don't need a license from you. There is no license you're giving me. You're giving me a sheet of paper letting the ci- the ci- the state know that I am complying with your ordinance. But to ta- tell me here that you have three licenses that are complying with your ordinance is a lie, and to tell me that I'm wasting my time is ridiculous. I, I will keep advocating for myself, whether it's in, in any form possible. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, there was a motion on the floor to close the public portion. It was a move by Councilman Abdelaziz, second by Councilman Udin. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public portion on the special meeting?
Roll call to close the public portion of the Municipal Council's special meeting. Councilman Abdelaziz.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So to G. Greer, I want you to listen up, because you said something about me supporting something. So when it comes to the nineteen million dollars, I have scheduled a meeting with the mayor tomorrow because I am surprised to hear that the money that they're putting for other projects was taken away from the rec center. So when I heard about it, the first thing I do is I schedule a meeting immediately with the administration. Now, this is a game changer as to if I support the budget or not. That's the power in my vote. So I have a meeting scheduled with the administration tomorrow. There's items, I'll tell you flat out. There's stuff in what they're reallocating this money, I'm not supporting. The main, from day one, I was advocating for a rec center with A R P. money. We will never get money like that because of a crisis that happened with COVID. That we will probably never get money like that for us to build infrastructure that will last fifty to a hundred years, a legacy. I don't care whose name it is, but when kids a hundred years from now are playing basketball in a building that this council approved to build, that's what you put money into. So that was always my number one priority. There is no rec center, coming from a guy that was a supervisor of athletics that has been through probably more gyms, rec centers, schools, fields in New Jersey than anyone in this city. So I need to find out what happened. Two, you're right, I do support. My, my vision wasn't just a rec center. My vision was actually building an entire municipal complex. Like when you go to other towns, when you go to Clifton, they have everything right over there. When you go to Englewood, they have everything. You park your car, the border health is to your right, zoning's to your left, the recreation center's right there, traffic finds right behind you. So my vision was build a new rec center. I'm not an engineer, on the corner on Washington and Memorial, separate building by itself in the middle of the first and fourth wards. Build a new police department, so we have a structure for the men and women. And build a brand-new municipal annex that for seven floors, every division is in that building. And sell off, right now, in this project, we're spending two point something million for Ellison Street behind us. We keep bleeding money in old infrastructures. Three million for the city council chamber. How about we build a new building? So somebody could go on the first floor, a resident, pay their taxes, and go upstairs to the Division of Health. Instead of getting in their car, looking for parking, and guess what it will do? It'll hold employees accountable, because everyone is in the same building. That's my vision for a municipal legacy annex, one-stop shop. And sell off all these other buildings that were bleeding money. Every single building we have needs to be fixed. Guess what? You could probably build a brand-new building. Look where we're sitting at today, because we neglected to fix old structures. So I'm, I'm upset. Because I said, yeah, you know what? That's a dream big project. I said, what's it gonna cost? Seventy million? Go to, um, Madison, down in the third ward. You guys just cut the ribbon, Council President. What's the school?
Phil- Phillips Academy.
Phillips Academy. How much did that project cost them? Twenty million? Over thirty million? Look how big that structure is, how many classroom it has. I'm talking about a seventy million dollar project. And say, say if it's even eighty million. When you have twenty million dollars to put a down payment, that's twenty-five percent. That's where that twenty million should have went. And then we figure out, we're spending millions every year to fix the air condition. That could be your bond payments for all these new structures. We're spending, we're asking, and, and I, I see this in Passaic. We're asking the governor in the budget to put millions in line items, right? This is where we, they, they come in. To repave a parking lot. To do this. Five million for Stray and Narrow to rebuild Stray and Narrow. If we had a big project like this, the City of Passaic got almost twenty million dollars for a parking garage and new building across City Hall. So just imagine, we go down to Trenton, we say, hey, we got a seventy million dollar project, we're putting twenty million dollars up, could we get some money to finish this project? We don't, we look for little, hey, we need a million here, five hundred thousand dollars here, put some over there. So I'm not for whatever you said. I am for a municipal complex, right, where the police officers could park on the other side of Memorial, where there'll be a parking lot, where you see the shrubs and the nasty uh, grass on Memorial, and you really have a hub of municipal offices with a rec center. So I have the meeting tomorrow to find out if we could salvage this. We have a meeting tomorrow, maybe we have to call our federal representatives to get an extension. Right, it's not the first time we got an extension, but this was on the table from day one. It wasn't like we just woke up yesterday and said, let's spend this money for a rec center. And I'm quite proud of this council. We don't agree on much. You ask us right now, is buy pie pizza from a pizzeria, we probably can't get nine people to agree for which restaurant. But this council all agrees that the city needs a rec center. And that's the truth. So I will be meeting tomorrow. Once I get more answers, I will be letting you guys know. I do support it in downtown, in the middle of the first and fourth wards, accessible to residents on the south side, that's the furthest, that could take a tr- um, a bus straight down to Broadway and walk across the street to the rec center. Or come down from a five-minute ride. So that project needs to be, I want to hear what the administration's gonna say, where they're gonna get that nineteen million dollars to kickstart that project. And then, once I get more information, I'll make my decision. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Abdelaziz. Councilwoman Cotton.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. I just want to say, um, to, um, Roger, I mean, what you said tonight was the first time I'm hearing it. I just can't believe that it was not, some council members here did not know about this. Uh, I don't sit on finance, so it had to be brought up in finance somewhere about the money not being used. It gotta be used, but I know with the, um, that COVID money that we got, I'm not sure when the deadline was, but I know we, we ain't got much time left. Maybe another year, twenty twenty-five, that money gotta be spent, um, that we receive, so. Al, you said, Roger, you brought this up tonight. And no, my first choice, when we talked about a recreation center, was the Y W C A. It sits between the fourth and the fifth ward. Um, that building has a lot of rooms in there, they had the gym in there, they had a basement in there. I went in there a few times, where we used to meet, National Council Negro Women. I thought it was an ideal spot to put uh, a recreation, not center, but a community place for, 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 for everyone to use. And not only just for children, but for seniors, for, um, uh, organizations that need to have a space to go, uh, uh, meet with, with people. So I'm curious too, Roger Greer, of what nineteen million that was supposed to be used for something else, and is not supposed to be, because I know you have, um, a guideline where you have the deadline. And I know the deadline, but by me not sitting on finance board, the finance committee, I, I can't believe that council members sitting here did not know, I didn't know about it, Al didn't know about it. We don't sit on the finance. I, I, I mean, somebody should have known about it, and I'm not sure, somebody. No, I'm just saying, I don't sit there, I don't know, somebody should have said something to someone, but you know, it's a lot that, um, you know, um, and I can understand, it's like you, you, you have to share. Uh, Council President, he sits on finance, and everybody else is gone. Who's in on finance? Ain't nobody else here? Who is?
So.
Well, but that's, you are financing. You know about the nineteen million? I mean, how you didn't know that?
Point of order, we're in the middle of it.
All right, thank you, but I just want to say, I just want to say, you know, we're, we're gonna look into that. No, you cannot. You know, and like I said, regardless, it's about, it's about the kids. And I still go back many, many years when my husband was a council, councilman in the nineteen eighties, and he tried to get the City of Patterson to buy the old Masonic temple, which was Broadway between Cowell Street and East Eighteenth Street. And at that time, they only wanted two hundred thousand for that entire building, and he could see that it could, it could house the seniors, the, the kids, they got a cafeteria, it got theaters, they got so much stuff. So we have to like, you know, think more, more ahead. But I'm not crazy about going to one eleven.
You please wrap it up.
For no recreation center. I ain't crazy about going that way. And also, I just want to say too, and Councilwoman Mims, and you said it. My husband sat here in nineteen eighty. He would let nobody come after Marlee Jackson. He wouldn't let nobody come after Maria Magna.
Right.
He wouldn't let nobody come after them ladies, and there were only two ladies sitting up here with him.
Yes.
And he did have to throw people out the meeting. You know why? They called him a gorilla. They called him monkey. They call him all kind of names. And don't tell me you're supposed to sit up here and let somebody call you an ape and a gorilla and a nigger. What kind of mess is that? That you gotta sit there and listen to that?
And nobody says nothing.
You shouldn't have to sit here and listen to that, but Roger Greer, thank you for bringing that up today. Um, so everyone for coming out here, thank you all for coming. Um, Anthony Deloso. De La Santos. I'm gonna look into what the conversation, we talked about cannabis, because I think it's more than what, what I'm hearing. But I think that we gotta, I'm gonna look into it myself personally. But you all out there, thank you for coming out. There's so much stuff, my, I see my freedom.
Yes, yeah.
Um, my church ladies. I love to see y'all in the audience. But I thank you, my Eva. Thank you for coming yesterday, supporting my baby girl. Uh, and there's so much that we need to, um, to get done, and, um, you know, we as a community gonna talk together, but, but that being said, Madam. I know you ain't talking to me.
Councilwoman.
Al, what are you saying? You see, you see how, you see how... You see how they always like, you know, uh, let me tell you something.
Point of order, point of order. Some of us gotta go home.
Councilmembers.
Point of order.
Let, let me just say, I always say, and I said to Al when he first came in here, when he first became a councilwoman, I say, you cannot sit here and be angry and be mad. You gotta laugh. You gotta have fun. You gotta like feel good sometimes. And, and I know, and I say to all council members, right?
That's why this is.
I stand up for you. What happens?
Thank you. My, with that being said, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Good night, everyone. God bless you all out there. Corporation Council, B, uh, 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 Philin B. A., Harry Savalas, my video guy Rafael, and everybody else. Madam Clerk, uh, Philis, my, my council colleagues, have a good night.
No, we're not leaving, Councilwoman. We have to vote on the special items. This is only closing the public portion.
Well, why Al started talking so much?
No. I...
I know, we were close.
We got you, Councilwoman. We got you, we got you. Councilmember, we're just closing the public portion, and then we have to vote on the item, and then we have to close this special meeting.
I'm sorry. My vote is yes.
Please do not leave.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dr. Mims.
And so, uh, to the public, first of all, I always start by saying thank you to those members that have sat through. The workshop actually ended very quickly, and then we have the public portion. So I want to say to G., I was just as shocked as you were when I read the, saw your post on social media about us losing the nineteen million dollars. The administration, some months ago, maybe a year ago, they reached out for all council members to meet with them, to create a wish list on what some of the items you would like to see to, uh, for the ARP dollars, American Rescue Plan dollars to be utilized for. So when we met with them, we gave some ideas to them, but we did not know until I saw your post, that we're in jeopardy of losing it. No one told us. There was no email sent to the council members. Thank God sometimes for the newspaper, because that's where we find out a lot of information. We had no idea. So, and I, and the legacy center, dreams, whatever you're talking about, I have no idea, no clue what that's about, because it wasn't given to me. I, I don't know who it was given to. You're saying a couple of people. I don't know who they were. I, I did not see it. I want to put that on record. One of the things that I said when I, when I heard about the, the one-stop shop, right, or with, with the rec center, for me, I'm born and raised in the fourth ward. I am, I am very clear to the reality of what's happening in our city. I work in the schools every single day. There's no way that I could put a rec center, one rec center in one building with all of the turf wars and all of the shootings and all the violence that is going on. You may be able to possibly, and I'm not saying you can, possibly, and we have officers in place, and I know they'll shake your, their head. You may be able to kind of intervene after it starts, but you're not gonna be able to control it when they leave the building. So if you don't put a safeguard in place, when they leave the building, we're gonna have a lot of bloodshed on our hands. So that was, when I had the conversation, I didn't agree with one rec center in one building. I spoke about statistically that it is proven in the first, fourth, and the fifth ward of the cen- city that those wards have the highest level of crime. Not that there's not crime in other areas, it is just statistically proven that in the first, fourth, and the fifth, there are more crime happening in those wards than other wards. So what I recommend it is that we partner with the school district. There's something in the school district called Full Service Community Schools, which Congressman Pasquale, congratulations on your reelected, reelection. He has fought for eleven, and it may be more at this point, but there's eleven full-service community schools in our school district, which sup- which provide after-schools, dental care, all type of things, which would be great, where it's all over the, the city, which will help if we strategically place them within the parameters, not just the public school, but all the schools in the city. It wouldn't cost us nineteen million dollars or whatever, the, the huge dollar amount. It would not be a, a burden, because I think it would be a burden. Say, this project costs a hundred million dollars. If we're only allocating nineteen million, the taxpayers are gonna have to pay the eighty-one, and then the budget is gonna have to go up, and you're not gonna get a two percent. You may have to get an eight or a ten percent tax increase. So for me, my mindset was, yes, we gotta think long-term, bigger, global, transformative, but we also have to consider the small tax-based entity of the City of Patterson. Do we need a rec center? A rec center? No. We need multiple rec centers. Not just one, because we have to, if we're thinking about saving our children and saving the village, we should be partnering with the schools, the churches, the mosque, um, faith-based entities, everybody. And even some of the not-for-profits that are going out and say, what are some plans? Have some meetings, and I know there were some had, but I'm talking about strategically, because we can work with people like N J C D C, so many other places to say, okay, we want to do rec centers. How can we partner so it saves us in the cost, doesn't, so we don't have to exp- How can we partner so it saves us in the cost, doesn't, so we don't have to expend 19 million dollars and we can utilize that money for other things? I'm like Councilman Abdelaziz. I had a conversation with the administration today and there will be follow-up, even not in regards to the money being lost, cause I wasn't really aware of that, that the money was lost, but trying to understand now that we know that that money, for whatever reason, is lost, then we need to be able to say, how do we salvage it and still do, let the rec center be the priority? Uh, I didn't see in the, the allocation, uh, the, like Vera Ames Park and all that, that money is already allocated. That has nothing to do with this 19 million dollars, totally separate from that. It's, um, line item and all that, but I just believe that we, we, we have to have conversations. This is why I talk about talking and working with the administration, right? It has to be a conversation to BA and corporation counsel that something is sent out to the council, cause we found, it was in a newspaper. So we should not have to wait for newspaper articles or, or community, um, people to come out like Brother G, we appreciate you coming out, but we should not have to hear it from Brother G that we're in jeopardy of losing 19 million dollars. We had no idea, we get blamed for a whole bunch of stuff, but we didn't know. I, I, I mean, I didn't know and as we went down, you heard three council people already say, they had no clue. So, um, I just want to put that on record, what, what that, and I had some other, um, items too, that I gave for the wish list and those things have been done and they're in the allocation of the dollars that we've already spent. Some great stuff that we did. To the cannabis situation, I just wanna put on record, I stated it outside of the camera. This council has already approved three retail licenses for cannabis. In order for anyone else that has applied, have given their money for cannabis, two things have to happen. One, we have to amend the ordinance to expand the license. That takes two readings, two workshops, two regular meetings. That's the first place. Then the next step after it's approved, if it's approved, the next step is to select three, whatever it is. If we want three more, whatever more, then there's a process to identify through the administration who will be selected. That process takes a while. This council was brought before this council, we denied six, and then they brought us to approve 10, which I didn't understand. If we said no to six, I just didn't understand why we would increase the number, but it went to 10. It was not approved. We currently have three that were approved. We're not receiving any funds, cause there's some concerns that they're having and they're dealing with it through the state, but I just wanna make sure the process is clear to the community. Cannabis license, it is not before this council, but if someone is interested or you have paid your money, the first step has to be, we amend the ordinance to expand it and that would have to be approved in, in ordinance. Anybody saying anything other than that, it is not how it goes. I wanna be clear, cause I don't want nobody to say, no one told me the process, I'm telling you the process and it cannot be overread any other way. We approved the ordinance. It was approved by this council. So if somebody else wants it, it has to be amended. And if it gets approved through the amendment, through two ordinances, the next step is economic development, the administration presents it, comes through our committee, economic development committee, we talk about it, then we present it to the council and then those are the entities that are selected. That's gonna be a long process. That's not gonna happen by the next workshop, that's not gonna happen by the other work, it's not gonna happen. So I don't want nobody to tell you, oh, by the next workshop, your item will be on. It's not gonna be on. The item has to be amended to be expanded first. Until that happens, we can't move forward. And I don't wanna call corporation counsel and say, right, uh, right, a letter of support for the state gives a license. But with that being stated, I want everybody to keep my mom in prayer. She wasn't feeling well on tonight, um, and I'm grateful to God through prayer. My sister is with her. I was able to come down to the meeting, but if I vacated, I'm not here for the closing remarks, I have to go check on my mom. But just keep my mother in prayer, you know, my mom has been going through a lot. She almost died of COVID, um, and then after that, she went blind in one of her eyes. Um, she's been doing much better and today there was a situation, so please keep my mom in prayer. Um, everybody knows I'm her oldest daughter and she only has two children, so please keep my mom in prayer. She's with my sister. Um, and to all my council colleagues, Madam BA, Deputy Clerk, BA, my, my favorite BA over here, and, um, and also to Madam BA, long in the passing of her mother-in-law, my deepest condolences, corporation counsel, IT, to the public, police officers, thank you for your service, uh, God bless you and have a good night. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Oden.
Uh, thank you, Pat. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, uh, thank you, those are still waiting with us after the, uh, workshop session and still sitting for the special portion. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Greer, that you, the way you were surprised to see the news about 19 million dollars. When I saw the news yesterday, I, I called the administration right after and at the time I found out actually Madam BA lost one of her family members, so I could not call her. That way you were excited, I think every single council members, the community members were excited about this. For the recreation center, we had multiple, uh, community forums in different parts of the city, as you know this. And when we heard this, in different narration came from the administration, which is, uh, they wanted to have a, a recreation center with public safety complex and they wanted to have a partnership with the private, uh, you know, investors. So that narration is totally new to us. So when you came here, you show your frustration, we are pretty much in the same frustration level as yours, as you are. Cause we did not hear back, hear from the administration first, we heard from the newspaper as the, uh, indirect method of communication, I would say. So again, thank you for coming here and we are not going to make the decision, uh, that we're supposed to be, since it's a different narration came, uh, we have to wait and see and how they handle this money and whether they are going to, and how they are going to get this money back. So no comment at this point, but again, uh, when I saw the news, I called first yesterday when I saw this news, just, just know this, so we are on top of it. Uh, Mr. De La Santos, again, I'm restating it. Um, I understand your frustration level. And why am I saying this? Because we had, and again, I'm saying, we have three retail licenses, right? And we gave them away. But you were saying those who took those licenses, they are not meeting the criteria, that's totally different story. I think you said that, you know, someone, right? Am I correct? Yes. So this is not actually, um, we as the council members can go and check whether they're meeting the criteria or not, that's the administration. You're right, absolutely. So if any of them failed to provide the services or getting the licenses, that different story, who else getting the priority among these three? That's what I'm, I'm speaking about. Now, if you talk, talk about the additional expansion, then when, right after three, uh, when we approved, along with you, some other applicants showed up to the meeting and they said, um, you know, the previous, uh, director of the economic department, he has, uh, collected fees from the applicants. At the time, we had, I mean, we have no additional or no amendment, three were gone. So we were surprised to, uh, you know, see or heard the, uh, you know, applicants that paid already. Now, my point is that when they came up with three, six additional, it failed first time. The second time they came back with 10, it failed second time. So failed twice. It's not really your application failed, it's the amendment to expand the numbers of the retail license that that failed. Now, you were coming here and you were, I understand your frustration, cause you're in, you already invested to it. My point is you, and I think administration need to answer you clearly that. Why are they holding your 30,000 dollars that you, you paid a year ago when we had no licenses available? It means that, let me give you an example. It means that I am selling your property when the property does not really exist. Exact, exactly that's what you are doing. Now, as a council person, what, I mean, really, we cannot really deal with you at this point. I mean, no, no application, no applicants at point. Only thing, if anybody comes up again with, to increase the numbers of the licenses, if it passes, then we're going to consider who we applied first, second, or what's the priority or who's meeting the, uh, criteria or not, that's total different story. But at this time, whether we are going to increase the numbers of license or not, and there is no guarantee that they're going to be increased. Yes, the council members, we had that before, council members, some of the council members supported, some majority did not. You never know, it could be the same scenario again. So I definitely would say whatever I feel is right, cause I feel exactly bad for you too, because you invested. If I put my feet on your shoes, I would definitely not come here, I'm gonna go to the administration and ask the question, why are you holding my money? Right? And why am I making you to lose money every month? Cause you rented a place, as you had mentioned. So I definitely would say that and recommend you to just go to the administration, get the correct answer. Cause at this point, coming here, sitting here, uh, as I'm saying, you can come here, definitely. This is your, your house. You can come here, you can say whatever you want. But again, I'm, I feel bad every time I see you here, uh, because your frustration, it, there's no solution coming from this chamber. So, um, I think I'm speaking too much today, right? Uh, Council President, thank you so very much for holding this special meeting, uh, because we actually honoring, uh, the current principal of instruction at John F. Kennedy High School, uh, Mr. Osoria, who's, uh, and this is the reason this special meeting for. So, uh, I definitely give shout out that you, um, did not move in the last meeting to make sure that I moved this agenda and I really, um, appreciate that. With that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Oden, Councilman Velez. I'm sorry.
I gotta take my time here, because Mr. G Greer, all respect, came forward with something that I not aware of, that 19 million dollars. And let me say this, the article says 19 million dollars shipped, shipped to other projects, shipped to other things. So we, as Councilman Abdelaziz said, I just wanna know the result of that meeting tomorrow, if you could share with me, because we got the power to pull the hall on that as council, right? It had to be a conversation on it, uh, Mr. G Greer. But sit tight, there's another thing that's the real disturbance. Colleagues, the roof is on fire. The city council roof came down and I recall that they said, Madam BA said, that they did tests and it came back negative. The article that I'm reading right now says that has asbestos. We are putting at risk the health of those employees in the third floor and everybody in the second and everybody in the first and whoever go through that building. If it tested positive, it's in the air.
Yes, sir.
It's in the air. Council President, I know we was rushing to fix, 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 but asbestos is cannot be fixed in one day to the other. Immediate action, asbestos is serious. And let me say this, and I gotta put it on the record. Mr. BA, I know you're BA today, I'm sorry. But since the roof collapsed, I've been receiving complaints from city employees about coughing, coughing, yes, coughing, coughing, just in case. About that they short of breath, it could be related with asthma. I have a gentleman that works up there, I'm concerned about him. He works up there and it's close to that roof. If they have and came back positive in asbestos, so immediate action had to be taken. Immediate action had to be taken. I know that a lot of ACs are individually in the, in the, in the offices, but asbestos, you cannot see it, you can breathe it, it runs in the air, AC will produce it and people could get sick right away. And probably long-term, they find out it was from the ceiling of our roof. So saying that, um, I know human services director is here, uh, please, I know the, the Department of Health was the one that conducted, also called a company to make sure this is accurate. If the 19 million dollars are important for recreation that we support, for recreation center, also the welfare and health of our city employees are also important, also important. We cannot take this lightly. The roof collapsed, they had to dismiss employees of, uh, board of health because the AC was not working. We have the police department building, the building for the court and, uh, division of, uh, improvement had no CO. You know, I could go on and on. And they cannot get mad at us, because we are the legislative body and people come and complain to us and we had to deliver the message to the administration. I know that we are going to be voting on item, thank you for coming and you look tough, my brother, I never saw you like that, but I know that Councilwoman Mims called for Mims, but you came slow. Um, uh, but this is serious. Please, it's serious. You know, and let me get, let me get this clear, right? Council President and to the audi, to the audience, to viewers, if I throw my little yoke, joke in a, in a, in a serious term, it's because I don't wanna get real mad. You don't wanna see me real mad. So, um, saying that, Council President, Madam Clerk, um, we'll vote the public portion, uh, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Definitely, we will vote on this item. We just have one item in the special meeting, uh, and the item is from Councilman Dean and they're honoring our phenomenal principle of JFK. But Councilman Velez, I'm not rushing anything. When I say that, the need, building need to be fixed, I've been on top, because you say, us best, we're gonna rush. I'm not rushing anything, but it's my responsibility to ask administration, hold administration accountable for the job that need to be done at the chamber. What, what that incident took place over a month and month ago, I don't see no action, uh, the seal, the, the ceiling is open and if it's open, i- if we have a problem, we gotta get a solution. That's our chamber, that's the city hall and since it's open, we put in the life, the, uh, you know, the health and, and the condition of our employee at risk. That's the reason why I'm being insisted with a BA, with administration, that they gotta take action and fix, uh, city hall. Look where we are right now, this is not even a safe area. Our Madam Clerk, the staff, they have to walk through city hall, they gotta bring all the paperwork. It's, it's very difficult. That's the reason why I'm being on top of administration. I'm gonna continue, uh, advocating to make sure that they get the, like, they fix that. At best, or they have to clean it, they have to remediate it, they have to get it done and we gotta go back to city hall. Simple as that. But if they don't start, they never gonna end, they never gonna finish. And if they leave that open, they put in the health and in the life of our employee and the staff at risk. That's my concern. If can I stay open like that, they gotta get it done. Uh, Brother G, that was never discussed on finance. Um, I'm a member of the finance committee and that conversation never took place on finance. I will be at the meeting with Councilman Abdelaziz tomorrow. Uh, the, this, the children of the city of Patterson deserve a rec center. If we wanna have a future, a beautiful generation, we have to invest in our children now. We have to work with part, uh, partnership with, uh, the school districts, Councilwoman Mims mentioned before, NJ CDC, we have so many great entity here that we gotta bring them to the table. We, we need those 19 million dollars to give what our children deserve, a rec center with a state-of-the-art swimming pool, uh, track and all the sport that our children needed in the city of Patterson. And we're gonna continue fighting for that. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are six yeses, three absences. Public portion of the special meeting is hereby closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's go item number one on the special meeting, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number one is a resolution honoring Principal Jorge V. Osorio for his years of service as an educator and principal instructor at John F. Kennedy High School, is sponsored by Councilman M.D. Forrest Oden and co-sponsored by all remaining members of the municipal council, city council resolution 24,032.
Second, second, some of.
Second.
It was moved by Councilman Alage Forrest Oden, second by Councilwoman Mims, Council President Allesmend, the Councilwoman Ruby Cap, and Councilman Louis A. Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number one.
Roll call on item number one for approval, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I wish, uh, the principal nothing but, uh, success in his new job as assistant principal of a large high school. I know that what it takes day to day and what you deal. and what you deal with, and I wish you nothing but the best. And thank you for your service to our city and good luck. And I want to apologize on behalf of G. Greers, um, and him coming extending this meeting. He had a really good meal in South Patterson today, so gave him a little bit of energy. That's why, that's why he's there. He, he, he ate pretty well, I saw the pictures. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Adelizis. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Yeah, they had a night out. Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to say, uh, to, uh, Principal, uh, uh, Osorio, who works with my daughter Candace Cotton at John F. Kennedy High School. I wish him well. I know he has gone on to another school district. I'm not quite sure which one he has moved on to, but I just want to wish him well. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Mims.
God bless you, Principal Osorio. Thank you for all you've done. Godspeed. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Oden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, first of all, thank you, Council President, for holding this item. Um, from the last meeting, I had to leave for an emergency. So I, I really appreciate that. The Principal, uh, George, Mr. George Osorio, he is currently serving as a Principal of Instruction at John F. Kennedy High School. But he started teaching for Patterson Public School at East State High School in two thousand and seven. And, uh, he played different roles over the time. He was a vice principal at BTMF when, uh, John F. Kennedy High School was in educational complex for different academies. Um, and he did wonderful job over the time. When one year as a, uh, Principal of the high school, he brought a significant improvement in the school. And his departure is not easy for, for our school. And we, the reason of this resolution is to appreciate his service for the district. And at the same time, we, uh, we expect that one day he will decide to come back to the city of Patterson. Because we don't want to lose an educator, an educational leader like Mr. Osorio. So this is my, uh, message to him. This is a reason of coming with this resolution. Because I want to, I cannot really tell him to come back to the city, come back and serving for the Patterson. But I would like to send this message to him that this is a reason we pass this resolution because we really, really need him back. Um, because we saw the improvement, we saw his commitment, and I, I definitely, um, thank him for everything he has done. And he's also going for doctoral, uh, degree at Montclair State University. And, uh, again, uh, Mr. Osorio, thank you, thank you so very much. And we expect, uh, you, that you are going to come back to serve our children in the city of Patterson. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Oden. Councilman Velez.
I had the opportunity to met, uh, meet, uh, Mr. Jorge V. as a Victor Osorio, and he did a great work with the community, with the student, no matter where they come from, what flag they had. Uh, he was real communicated with individuals and I was student. You know, Councilman, uh, Councilman Oden stated, uh, that we losing teacher. And he wanted to come back. That's why he's doing this. And let me say this. This is good. We recognizing the work of men and women in education. We want to keep them here. So I sent a message to the Board of, uh, uh, Education to sit down and draft fair contracts for those teachers. For the people that worked in our schools, from the porters up to the teachers, for administrators and, 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 and those that work with our kids, the second home of our students, of kids. The other thing is, I take the opportunity too. I don't want to do resolution honoree to officers that we need to keep here because they need a fair contract. They need a fair contract. We are losing offer, officer every week. Believe it or not, there's some things that they don't want you to know. A state don't want you to know. But we are losing police officers because they haven't received a fair contract. They can, I, I know officers that are facing evictions. With the salary they get, they cannot even pay their rent. They had to get two or three jobs. Two or three jobs to be able to support. And they still single. You imagine they get married. They need five, six, seven jobs if they are working for the Patterson Police. It's a disgrace, the salary. And you know why I say it? Google it right now. Orlando PD is giving seven thousand dollars incentive for people from other state, other police officers that come from other state, an incentive to come down to Orlando PD. And top of that, a seventy-seven thousand dollars starting salary. That's without counting the NICE deferential and other things. I'm not saying, I'm not promoting this so they could leave. But I asked my son, if you want to come down to Patterson. And he said, no, you stay with your politics over there. I'm having fun here with Disney. And he's a police officer in Orlando. So I'm saying that because the surrounding city are taking our police officers. Council President, they are taking our police officer.
Oh, yes.
How difficult it is to sit down and say, let's do it for the man and woman of the city of Patterson. They are risking, they are alive. They don't sleep all night protecting our city. I just had to take the opportunity to lobby for our man and woman from the Patterson Police Department. They need a fair contract, and they need it now. Saying that, sorry, I take the opportunity of honoring Mr. Osorio, but I had to take the opportunity when you said that we don't want to lose teachers. At the same time, we don't want to lose our man and woman from the Police Department, Patterson Police Department. Saying that, Madam Clerk, I'm honored to vote yes in this resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mr. George Osorio, I just want to take to this moment to say thank you. Thank you for your hard work, all the, the contribution and the dedication to our children in Patterson Public School. You, you've been an amazing human being. I know you for many years. And it's been such a great pleasure to call you my friend. Also, I want to take this moment to thanks Councilman Alaj Farid Oden for bringing this resolution in front of us. And I put this special meeting together because we deserve to honor George Osorio the way, uh, he definitely deserved it. Uh, you put in your time, your effort, and dedicate part of your life to educate our children, to work in our school district. And, and we need more resolution like this. We, we need to support our teachers, principal. They are the ones, uh, dealing with all the social and emotional situation that our children go through. From their house, they go into the school, and our teacher, they have to deal with all of that. We have to support our teacher, we have to support the staff. We need to allocate more funding into the classroom. Uh, I don't want to get into a salary from our Police Department because that's a serious issue. And that's something that, it really hurt me when I see gray, uh, police officers leaving the town, a, a city that they love, uh, to go to one of the town because they don't have other choice because, uh, because of the salary. I make a recommendation way back. We should start our police officer from the beginning. They should start no minimum of fifty thousand dollars from the start. And that contract need to be addressed. And if we, otherwise, you're going to continue losing manpower in the city of Patterson. And the only way that we're going to bring safety into our community is by supporting our Police Department with, with a fair contract, with the right salary, and support it with the resources that they need. Uh, I've been very vocal for many years, but we cannot stop the fight here. Uh, because safety, it's key for us to move the city forward. So once again, George Osorio, congratulations, phenomenal job. And I want to say thank you to all the staff on Patterson Public School. Thank you for the job that you guys doing for our children. They are the future. And if you were, if we want to have a, a beautiful, uh, generation, uh, moving forward, we have to invest time in our children. And any decision that we make, we have to make sure that those decisions will impact our children on a positive way. Uh, congratulations. With that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are six yeses, three absences. Resolution honoring Principal Jorge V. Osorio is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think everybody spoke loud and clear. So let's close this special meeting now because I know Councilwoman Mims is about to leave.
Move to close.
So move to close by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, clerk, to close our special meeting.
Roll call to adjourn the Municipal Council's special meeting of Thursday, June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you. Good night, Patterson. God bless you all. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Mims.
Good night. My vote is yes.
Thanks to you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Oden.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, uh, again, uh, Council President. Good night, everyone. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Oden. Councilman Velez.
Um, before I close, Council President, you could agree with me on this. Uh, there was a ten-month baby, old baby, ten-month old baby. Her name is Cassidy. Have this citation right from her father, um, pickup, Addison. Last seen is was Sunday, the twenty-sixth of May. The young child, ten-month, is with the father. She took it without permission. The court ordered arrest on him. Also, the USA Marshal is looking for him in North Carolina. The only thing, they have communication with the individual. The guy is resisting. So they are searching for the individual over there